I call to order this meeting of the Cowalode County Board of Education Agenda 800, 6:30 PM Tuesday, August 15, 2023. Please stand in for a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All those in, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Recognition, it's Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Public Information Officer Dean Jackson to bring you our one recognition for tonight. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Board members, Georgia School Board Association is a very important partner for our, the Cowalode County school system. In fact, I'd like to recognize for a moment Board Member Amy Dees, who serves on their board, also GSBA Director, District Six Director. But a tremendous partner, and we have one honor tonight associated with the Georgia School Board, Haley Faust. A sophomore at East Cowalode High School has been selected as member of the 2023 Georgia School Board Association Youth Advisory Council. In fact, I believe she is one of only nine students statewide to be selected for this honor. I'd like to recognize Ms. Faust and ask her to come down, and I also am going to call on East Cowalode High School Assistant Principal JD Revere to help make this recognition.
Can everybody hear me? How are you? My name is JR Revere. I am the Assistant Principal at East Cowalode High School. And I get the pleasure of presenting to you Ms. Haley Faust to, to the board member and everybody here involved. I think I, I started to learn a little bit about the, the organization that she was a part of. Just kind of give you, for those of you who don't know, the George, the Georgia School Board Association is giving the high school students here in this state the opportunity to provide meaningful input to school board members. The YSA members have the opportunity to enhance their leadership skills and contribute to their community by affecting positive change for students across Georgia. And like they just, Mr. Jackson just said, and it was just mentioned, out of 300 students, she was one of nine. And she's the only one in Cowalode County that's getting the opportunity to do this. So that's, that's pretty big time for her. We're really proud of her. In the process of all that, she receives a paid trip to Atlanta, Georgia. In my hometown, that was a big deal. So she's going to gain some excellent, excellent leadership opportunities, a paid, or excuse me, not paid, sorry. Public speaking experience, participate in civic engagement, plus the ability to impact policies in Georgia. Build relationships and share thoughts with other students around the state. So as I was getting to learn more about this, I know a little bit about Haley. She's also very active in other things outside of this. She actually, she's on our school and serves in the leadership capacity on our school's first dance team. They dance at our basketball games. So when I found this out, it made perfect sense that she was a part of this and we're very proud of her. So congratulations.
Haley, I would, I would like to just add, it is a huge honor to serve on the GSBA Student Council because we value students' opinions. We hear from community members, right? But in my 14 years of doing this job, GSBA job, for about four and a half years, you can't make decisions in the boardroom without knowing what's going on in that classroom. And you give us a voice in the classroom. And I know every one of us sitting here, we've heard the GSBA Student Councils, we listen to you guys. You are given an opportunity to speak in front of the entire state body. 180 school board members belong, 180 school board districts belong to GSBA. Not to, not to frighten you, you're going to do fine, but you, you will be speaking to those. And to do that from across the state is just imperative because we know what's going on. It helps us to make decisions where we are. Because we, we reach out to you guys, we reach out to the school councils, we ask what's going on. So I could not be more prouder that you're from East Cowalode. Because that is my district, and I'm so excited to have you with District Six as well. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're going to take the minutes, one at a time. So is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 11th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
None.
Mr. Farmer's abstaining, that sticks in favor. Is there a motion to approve the called minutes of July 25th, 2023? Is there a motion to approve the-
So moved.
Is there, okay, all right, we're awake, we're awake. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
I abstain.
Mrs. Dees and Mr. Roberts abstains, that's five in favor. Is there a motion to approve the called minutes of July 27th, 2023?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any abstentions? Okay, Mrs. Dees, Mr. Farmer, and Mr. Glover abstains, four in favor. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the called minutes of August 3rd, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any abstentions? Mrs. Barnett abstains, and we'll do the last two together. Is there a motion to approve the called minutes of August 3rd, 2023 at 6:30 PM?
So moved.
And, and the called minutes of August 3rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action items, group one, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first action item I have for you in group one is to approve CTAE Carl D. Perkins V Federal Grants. Board approval is required for two Career Technical and Agricultural Education related grants for the 23-24 school year. As per Perkins and CTAE guidelines, board approval must be obtained before these grants can be encumbered. Number one, Carl D. Perkins V Grants in the amount of $201,775. This grant is used for the purchase of equipment, supplies, professional development, and program improvement for CTAE programs and courses at Central Educational Center, East Cowalode High School, Noonan High School, and Northgate High School. The second one, CTAE State Grants in the amount of $85,886. This grant is used for Career Technical Education Extended Day Pay, apprenticeship and Supervision Pay for CTAE Programs Systemwide. Board approval for the aforementioned grants is requested. The total of these grants is $287,661. And upon local board approval, applications will be sent to the Georgia Department of Education for approval. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to, to approve the CTAE Carl D. Perkins V Federal Grants. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would like to say a quick thing on these grants. I know that Dr. Shawanda Jackson, who was here prior for many years, grants were her specialty. And I'm very happy to see Dr. Chase Puckett's name at the bottom here. Thank you for pursuing that and for getting those grants. It's so, so important. And, and we really appreciate you jumping in and doing those grants. So thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next action item I have for you in group one is to approve a contingency change request to modify an existing storm drain inlet at Noonan High School. Approval is requested for contingency change request to modify an existing storm drain inlet in the driveway at Noonan High. While excavating to install the new pavement at Noonan High, contractor found an existing storm drain inlet that had been covered by the existing pavement. Existing curb inlet is in a section of pavement near Cougar Way that was not in the original scope of work to be repaved. In order to make this inlet work with the new paving and curb and gutter, it's going to be necessary to raise the existing drain inlet and rework the new pavement elevations to allow for proper drainage. To avoid delaying the schedule to complete this paving prior to the start of the school year, a field change has been approved to proceed with this work. Project engineers have reviewed the change request and agree that the scope of work and pricing are acceptable. Total contingency adjustment amount is $19,139.65. Change order proposal and supporting documentation are attached. And Board members, I'll just mention this to you, this is one of two that I emailed to you a couple of weeks back when it came up in the field. So, Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve a contingency change request to modify an existing storm drain inlet at Noonan High School. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Horton, one thing that just came to mind when you were reading the overview, so with that inlet that we are replay, or was there already a plan to put a drain in that area? Or, because I think we're, Corey or Ronnie, we're modifying it in a way that, and I'm sorry, I just came to mind. We're modifying it in a way that it sounds like we're going to use it, if I understand that correctly? So it would, could you mind? Yep. Good point, good.
The drain that we found was just covered over. We tested it to make sure it worked still. When we uncovered it with the old asphalt, we raised it to the correct grade that we're putting the new parking lot to. Made sure it worked, got it running again, and it's helped substantially with the water flow going down that Waterworks Road.
And so there was already, was there already, and I, was there already a plan to put a drain there, or did we just stumble upon this and it works out?
There was not a plan to, in that area, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
It was further up the line.
That was my question. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Next item I have for you in group one is to approve the 23-24 Tribunal Hearing Officers. Call on Dr. Guy. Dr. Guy.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The following individuals have completed training and with your approval will serve as tribunal members and hearing officers for the 2023-2024 academic school year. Stephanie Easterwood, Dr. Eric Fiss, Edward Hunter, Dr. Priscilla Lee, Megan Hinton Ogletree, Sean Parker, and Marius Pruitt. The hearing officers are Dr. Stephen Puckett and Anthony Finley.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve the 2023 through 2024 tribunal hearing officers?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next action item I have for you in group one is to approve a one-time custodial supplement. In June, the State Board of Education approved a one-time $1,000 custodian supplement with CRRSAESSR II Reserve Funds. The supplement is in recognition of the increased services and support required to maintain clean and safe environments for students and staff. Approval is requested to pay the one-time custodian supplement on the August 18th, 2023 bi-weekly payroll. Custodian supplement will be paid to all active custodians as of August the 18th. Custodians who have resigned or have been terminated prior to the payment of the custodian supplement will not be eligible for the one-time supplement. These custodian supplements are subject to all federal, FICA, and Medicare tax withholdings. Total cost of the supplements approximately $165,781. The Georgia Department of Education will fund $146,740 from SRR II Reserve Funds. The general fund will cover approximately $19,041. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent for a one-time, to approve a one-time custodial supplement. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would just like to thank you, Dr. Horton, for taking my phone calls this week on that. I was pretty excited about that. I think our custodians are, are well-deserving of that $1,000. So I called him and asked several questions on that, and when will they be told?
Once you approve it. We'll tell principals at the principal's meeting in the morning and then get the word out to our custodians later in the day tomorrow.
All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next item I have for you in group one is to approve renewal for the FY 23-24 contract between Cowalode County Board of Education and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia Cooperative Extension Services 4H. The Cooperative Extension Service, the University of Georgia College of Agricultural and Environmental Sciences, offer educational programs, assistance, and materials. This contract is for services between the Cowalode County Board of Education and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia Cooperative Extension Service. This allocation funds the 4H Extension Association position, which provides leadership and coordination for the fifth-grade school club program. Contract is in the amount of $17,011, beginning September 1st, 2023, and continuing through August 31st of 2024. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve the renewal for the FY 2023 through 24 contract between the Cowalode County Board of Education and the Board, and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia Cooperative Extension Services 4H. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next item I have for you in group one is to approve a contingency change request to lower gas and water lines at Noonan High School. Approval is requested for contingency change request to lower existing gas and water lines in front of the new gym at Noonan High. While excavating to install new curb and gutter in front of the new gym at Noonan High School, it was discovered that the gas and water lines installed in BP1 were in conflict with the curb and gutter. Utility lines were installed at the elevation shown in the BP1 plans. Curb and gutter cannot be raised without causing problems with drainage in front of the new gym. To avoid delaying the schedule to complete the work prior to the start of school year, a field change has been approved to proceed with the work. Total contingency adjustment amount is $17,783.38. Change order proposal and supporting documentation is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve a contingency change request to lower gas and water lines at Noonan High School. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Next item I have for you in group one is policy revision, and for that, I'll call on Dr. Guy again. Dr. Guy.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The following proposed policy revisions were presented at the July Board Meeting for Review and placed on the table for 30 days for public comment. These policies are now presented for your approval tonight, and I'll just review each of the four. Policy GBRH, Professional Personnel Leave and Absences. Policy JHB, or Regulation JHB, Student Activities Funds Management. IDCH, Dual Enrollment Policy. And the final one was Regulation IHE-R Promotion and Retention. And we did have some public comment, and, Dr. Horton, I think you want to address some of that.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Guy. Board members, if I may, I'd like to comment briefly on the revised promotion and retention policy, IHE-R, that's been brought to you for approval tonight. Over the course of the last month, it was brought to my attention that some have taken this change to mean that we're no longer requiring students to pass four English courses, four math courses, and four science courses in order to graduate, as spelled out in board policy, IHF6-R-0. This is not the case. This particular policy that's up tonight deals with matriculation of high school, grade level only. And the proposed change simply allows these required courses to be taken in a different sequence, if that's what's best for the student, without penalizing them. No changes have been made to graduation requirements that are stipulated in board policy in accordance with state board rules and Georgia law. State of Georgia requires students to earn 23 credits to graduate. Cowalode County school system requires students to earn 28 credits to graduate, which is above and beyond state requirements. Many students graduate with 32. In fact, I pulled a report a couple of days ago, and 76% approximately of last year's graduating class graduated with more than 28 credits. We also have core academic requirements in English, Math, Science, and Social Studies to graduate. No changes have been made to these requirements. Mr. Harris, if you would, if you'll pull up IHF6-R-0, and that lists out what the requirements are, and that policy has not changed, and it does not change with this action on promotion and retention tonight. Again, what it does is it allows, if it's best for a student, for them to take an English, a math, or a science out of sequence, it allows them to do that. And with students transferring in, and many of the variety of course offerings that we have and other systems have, we felt like this was, this was most appropriate for the diverse needs of our students. So with those comments, Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of all of the policy revisions.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Is there a motion to approve the policy revision?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next action item I have for you in group one is to consider a request to name the Noonan High School Athletic Training Facility. Approval is requested to name the new athletic training facility at Noonan High School, the Mullins-Brantley Athletic Training Facility, in honor of the enormous contributions of James Radar Brantley and Harry Mullins to the well-being of student athletes in Cowalode County. Letter of support for this request from Noonan High School Principal, Dr. Jamal Kemp, is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve the naming of the Noonan High School Athletic Training Facility?
So moved.
Hold on one second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The last item I have for you in group one is to approve a lease agreement with Community Action for Improvement Incorporated for use of the East Noonan Road Facility. Approval is requested to enter into a lease agreement with Community Action for Improvement Incorporated of Troup County to lease the East Noonan School to operate a preschool learning center. The lease agreement is attached. Board members, I will just mention, this particular group has offered Head Start Services in the East Noonan Road Facility for a number of years. So we're, we're excited to continue that partnership with them. I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve a lease agreement with Community Action for Improvement, Inc., for the East Noonan School Facility. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. There are no action items in group two bids. Moving to group three trips.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll call on Dr. Guy to bring you one trip tonight. Dr. Guy?
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The principal at Blake Bass Middle School requests permission for the chorus students to travel to Orlando, Florida from February 19th through February 21st of 2024 for Universal Studios musicians and recordings. The students will miss no school days, and there's no cost to the school system.
Recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve Blake Bass Middle School field trip request. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Superintendent's reports.
Thank you. I'll call on Mr. Chapman to bring you budget report and sales tax. Mr. Chapman?
Budget report, July is the first month in our new year. We were under budget $989. Sales tax continue to see good numbers there, just over $3.4 million increase year-over-year, it's 4.9%.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Board members, for our board goal report tonight, we have some members of our curriculum staff at the district level to discuss our recent information we got on our student performance on Georgia milestones. So we have Dr. Karen Barker, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Dr. Jillian Andrew, who is our new Director of Assessment and Accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Good evening. Dr. Jillian, Dr. Andrew and I, Dr. Jillian, Andrew and I, we're both excited to come before you tonight and just share some information about our test scores. But before actually we go into the scores, I want to give you just a little bit of background and remind you of a few things. First of all, we had already had our test scores at the school level, really first of the summer. And so we've been studying this data, we've been looking at it, making school improvement goals already. But just recently, the state released scores from across the state so that we could see comparisons of how Cowalode did in compared to the state average, and those districts around us, and then just our RISA average. So we are going to share some of that. I do want to remind you, our third, fourth, fifth grades in elementary take the end of grade assessment. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in middle school take the assessment, and at the high school, we have the end of course assessments. High school students take it in Algebra I, in Biology, American Literature, and US History. We do offer those assessments at the end of our semesters, when a student will take the course. So if a course ends at the end of first semester, they would be able to take it right at the end and not have to wait for the end of the year for our high school students because we're on block scheduling. We, we are proud of our scores, but we will share a little bit and kind of our thoughts of moving forward. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Andrew.
Thank you. So just to describe a little bit of what you're seeing up on the screens, the state scores, EOG and EOC assessments in four levels. The two top levels, proficient and distinguished, levels three and four, are students who are not likely to need assistance or remediation in order to be proficient with that content. So that's one of the things that we're looking at, is comparing our scores to the state and to the RISA of students who would not need assistance. The weighted proficiency is when the score- The weighted proficiency is when the scores are given, assigned points. Obviously, a level four weighs more heavily than a level one or a level two. So that's what you're looking at on the other column. Elementary students in Calhwyd County outperformed the state and the RISA in all areas. A couple of highlights to note, for ELA, in our elementary schools on average, we're almost nine percent above the state for proficient and distinguished learners. And in math, about eight percent. If you want to scroll down to the middle school scores. One area that we noticed was for sixth grade math, we did tie our RISA for levels three and fours, but we outscored them in proficiency. Essentially, that means that we had fewer level one students than the average of the RISA. And then a highlight, if you look down to the eighth grade science scores, we're looking at about seventeen percent more proficient and distinguished students than that of the state. The last page is some EOC comparisons. This shows disaggregated between winter of 2022 and spring of 2023. We definitely see some areas where we can improve. But I want to point out that while our spring algebra scores are a little lower than that of the state and RISA, overall, for the entire school year, when you combine all of the students who took Algebra I EOC, we did outperform the state and the RISA. It's not highlighted in this document. And again, the highlights for U.S. History, more than fourteen percentage points ahead in terms of proficient and distinguished learners.
All right, so you can see where we are currently. But you also know, one of our foundational beliefs is we believe we must continuously improve. And so you better believe we're already working. How can we get better? What do we need to do? And how can we go higher? And so we will spend some time, actually tomorrow's principals' meeting, sharing some of this data with our principals, and already starting to dig deeper into these comparisons and kind of go a little deeper into individual districts and do some comparisons, not only from at the district level, but school to school, beyond Calhwyd County. And so we're excited about that work. Before I conclude, I certainly want to say how much we appreciate the collaborative efforts in our schools. Our teachers work extremely hard, our administrators, and they work in partnership with our students and our parents. And it takes all of us together to be able to provide the level of instruction that our students need and deserve. And we couldn't do any of it without your support. So I want to say thank you. As we look at these and look at the accomplishments, and as we continue to press forward, we know that you support us. We appreciate that, and you're silently cheering and sometimes loudly cheering for us. And so thank you for that. I'm always proud to be a part of Calhwyd County School System, and you can see a little bit of why that is. So thank you.
Dr. Barker, what other systems make up the RISA that we are part of?
Okay, I may not be able to name them all, but Carroll, Carrollton City, Hurd, Troop, Harris, Meriwether.
Okay, okay. And how do these scores compare to the past, well, let's say, pre-pandemic scores? You know, we've talked ad nauseam about the learning loss and all of that. So how do they compare?
In some areas, we've increased. Some areas, we're still just not there yet. We do have some schools who have really rebounded, and they're doing very well. We also have some schools that the impact of not only the pandemic, but the tornado, had made just a really great impact. And so we're still trying to catch some of those gaps and close those and catch those kids up. But we're getting there. We're not quite over the threshold where we want to be before 2019, but overall, we're making some good progress.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more policy revision that we want to place on the table for the next month, so I'll call on Dr. Guy. Dr. Guy?
Thank you once again, Dr. Horton. As Dr. Horton said, we'd like to place a policy revision on the table for thirty days. This is Policy EBD-R, Heating and Lighting. In this regulation, we are seeking revisions that will bring us in line with recommendations that we have received from the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating and Air Conditioning Engineers. The set point for air conditioning would be changed so that our classroom temperatures for the cooling season, when it's really hot like it is right now, can be set at a range between seventy-two degrees to seventy-eight degrees. And it would change from the current regulation, which we follow, where we have to set between seventy-four degrees to seventy-eight degrees. And while this may seem like a small adjustment to go down two degrees, it makes a very huge difference for students and teachers and our staff members in classrooms. During the heating season, the temperature ranges would remain between sixty-eight degrees and seventy-four degrees.
Dr. Horton, a quick comment. I just want to thank you for putting this policy revision on the table. I know, I think we have all received comments, some just casual, some actual emails of hot classrooms and different stuff. And I hope Dr. Andrew is smiling a little bit, because I know some have come from her previous elementary school and, you know, different rooms are different challenges. So hopefully, this will help. We certainly want them to be comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will tell you, board members, one of the drivers behind this change is, when we began to look at this policy, when this policy was put into place, the original policy was back before the time when we had most of our buildings or all of our buildings on central level controls. We have thermostat controls that we can manipulate now and manage at the district level in every single classroom. Even though it has a thermostat, it just has a certain bandwidth on it. So getting us in line with that national recommendation, I think, is a big piece of it. And of course, anything we can do to help our folks be more comfortable when it's ninety degrees outside, I think is a good thing, will only help learning, and that's what we're after there. So we'll put that on the table for thirty days and hopefully bring it back to you next month for approval. Last thing I have is the facilities and construction report. You can see North Gate, it's still hanging out on the report, just waiting on some additional closeout documents that have been requested. Fire alarm replacements that we did over the spring and summer. We're waiting on closeout documents and completion of the punch list, and that's at Madras Winston Dowdell. Softball field houses, they are doing check-set drawings on those and hoping to receive bids on August the twenty-second. Band towers, the installation of those new towers at each of our high school campuses will begin in earnest in November of 2023. You can see Noonan High School, BP I substantially complete. BP II, the gym is coming along, basketball goals are installed, light fixtures and plumbing fixtures are going in, and we're scheduled for substantial completion there for October. BP III, which is the academic buildings, roof decking is being completed in the kitchen cafeteria. I was out there today and saw some masonry walls going up. Floor slabs are slated to be poured in auditorium later this month. And if you've seen the classroom areas out there, a lot of mason work's been done. And the front facade, I was by today and was kind of enamored with the brick on the front and the stone. So I'm pretty excited to see that front elevation continue to come along. Project completion for the academic building is still scheduled for July of 2024. Paving, those projects we did this summer, we're having school, so all those are substantially complete. And just waiting to get those closed out. And then you can see all the summer work that we did, all of that is complete, and had a really, really good start to the school year. Did want to mention really quickly, board members, before I close out, and it kind of goes along with the facilities report, just mention the start of school. We've had a good, solid week of school. Transportation, want to brag on our transportation department. Dr. Simmons and his crew have done a good job over the course of the last year recruiting bus drivers, and we're seeing the fruits of their labor now and across the district. All of our folks came back over the last couple of weeks, excited, eager, ready to get the school year started, and they've had a really good week. And we look forward to continuing that as we go forward. So just want to thank everybody on the smooth start to the school year. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. So we're moving on to our public comment section, we're a few minutes early. So I'll briefly read board policy, BCBI. So in order to improve communication between the Board of Education, BOE or Board, and the citizens of Calhwyd County, the Board of Education encourages citizens to attend regularly-scheduled meetings and speak on matters of general public education concern. Forty-five minutes will be set aside for this purpose at each meeting to guarantee an orderly meeting and to ensure that as many people as possible have an opportunity to speak. The Board of Education has implemented the following rules regarding public comment. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. The Board of Education will listen to each presentation without comment. After the presentation is made, each board member may respond if he or she wishes to for a period no longer than one minute each. Only citizens of Calhwyd County or employees of the Calhwyd County School System may speak in the public comment portion of the meeting. No grievances will be heard concerning any specific personnel action or any specific county employee except through the grievance process set forth in the Board's personnel policy. No one will be allowed to discuss any matter involving threatened or pending litigation with the Board of Education during the public comment portion of the meeting. In the need to preserve order in the meeting, no person attending the meeting will be allowed to boo, hiss, cheer, clap, or otherwise show approval or disapproval for any speaker in any manner whatsoever. No signs or placards advocating any action or position will be allowed at the meeting. No personal attacks on any person will be allowed. As Chairman of the Board and the presiding officer in response for the enforcement of these rules, no citizen or system employee will be retaliated against in any manner whatsoever for speaking on matters of public concern at the Board of Education meeting. Any person not recognized within the allotted time period for public comment will be rescheduled to speak at the next meeting. And finally, requests to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting must be received at the Board of Education office no later than three hours prior to that meeting being called to order. So with that, we have two speakers this evening. First is Ms. Jasmine Meehan.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for continuing to hear from the community on matters related to public education. Just to be clear, I'm here tonight in representation of myself. I do not come here to speak on behalf of any organization or political party. As I have stated many times before, I am a mother of two young children who have participated in government schooling for four years in this county. And I'm extremely concerned about the direction that we are headed. I sent you all an email back on June fourteenth in which I received only five responses. And that email reads as follows. I put, "Good evening, Calhwyd County Board of Education. After the continued claim of book banning directed towards myself, I wanted to share a few books with you that are present in our county schools as per the database. You are all not likely familiar with any of these titles. I hope that after looking into it, you will find them as inappropriate as I do. The attached are excerpts from the list below. None of them are considered classic American books. They all contain graphic descriptions of sexual activity and obscenities that one would typically assume for adults, not children. Just to be clear, even though I have stated this before, I do not believe that our media center specialists are seeking these books out. Also, I do believe that most of our media specialists are not even aware that these books contain the obscene materials within the pages. On the rare instance that any of them does, then shame on them, and I would hope that they would be addressed." The book Empire of Storms by Sarah Mass, there's an entire collection that we also have throughout our schools. I'm not familiar with all of her books. But Empire of Storms is at East Calhwyd Middle School, Smoky Road Middle School, and East Calhwyd High School. The Infinite Moment of Us by Lauren Miracle is at Noonan High. Damn Soul by Alana K. Arnold is at Noonan High and East Calhwyd High. And then Water for Elephants, which probably wins the most disgusting book on this list, it's not in my email, is at Noonan High and Evans Middle School. So I will leave you with these four titles. I fully understand I'm not permitted to request them for reconsideration with your policy updated last year. What I would like to request is for each of you to read the attached excerpts and pray about it. You cannot honestly believe that these books are okay. If you have children of any age or grandchildren, would you truthfully allow them to read this material? It is extremely disappointing that you all have not taken a stronger stance on this topic. It's not about LGBTQ plus or any of the other accusations that have been thrown my way. This is about knowing right from wrong. It is about keeping our children safe and salvaging what innocence we can in today's world. Anything else is an excuse or compliance with the Marxists that hate America, Christians, and all of our families. I thank you all for your time and look forward to hearing back from you. Have a blessed remainder of the week." So I sent that email on June the fourteenth. And there were a few of you that did reply, and I appreciate the responses that I did get. The first email just said, "Thank you for your email. Appreciate you sharing your thoughts with me. Have a great evening." And that was from you, Dr. Horton. Andrew Copeland, you did reply, and I appreciate it. You said, "Thank you for sharing with me. I hope you too have a blessed remainder of the week." Frank Farmer, your email reply said, "Thank you for contacting me. Who are the Marxists that hate America, Christians, and all our families? I pray every day and night, so today will be no different." Mr. Glover, your response, "Thank you for contacting me. I will look into these books over the summer and get back with you. Please give me some time to read these with my work. Board of Education at home schedule will take me some time. Hope you enjoy the summer." And that was a fair response, because I'm busy too. And then the last response that I got was from Mr. Dubose, and you just said, "Thank you for sharing these books and excerpts. I will certainly review them." And I do appreciate the both of you stating that you were going to look into those books. So I do look forward to hearing back from you on your thoughts. But Mr. Farmer, your reply was very interesting, because you just wanted to know who the Marxists were that hate America, Christians, and our family. You had no thoughts on the filth that was presented. So I assume that that means you support children being exposed to that material. So your response also lets me know that you have no clue what is going on in the world today. And you and many others in our society have drunk some very powerful Kool-Aid. You have absorbed the media's lies and deceptions with open arms. I've said it many times, we are in a spiritual battle. Some know, some don't. But I'm aware that there are some county media specialists that do agree with me and have, there are others who have expressed the same complaints. There have been some books removed that have not been brought to this board, and I appreciate that that's been done. So, thank you.
Alan Brady.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Just a small collection of observations and thoughts that I'd like to share with you tonight. And if I am misunderstanding anything, I would appreciate you explaining to me. So the way I see it, the job of school board members is that you are my eyes, ears, and voice when it comes to all matters related to Calhwyd County Public Schools. In reality, you don't represent the system or its administrators, you don't represent the teachers, and you don't represent the students. He who writes the check is the customer. The school system produces a product, which hopefully is well-educated and capable of young people by the age of eighteen or so. The workers who produce this product are the staff. But the customers who pay for this product and the services required to produce it are us, the ordinary taxpayers. And the quality control inspectors, if you will, in this process are the parents. It's really their responsibility to see that their children are educated as they see fit. But they've chosen to contract this responsibility out to the school system. If they decide that this system is not producing the results it should, they have to make other arrangements and pay for that in either time or additional treasure or both. I hope you keep that process and those roles in mind. Another topic, the annual review of what the customers must pay for this service has now come and gone again, apparently. We were told that we were getting historic tax rate break that results in a payment increase of around ten percent. Must be new math. Some of the same type of math that results in more money being spent on the new construction for some things that frankly seem to be mistakes by someone. At least that's what would be claimed in my world, but really, I don't want to dwell on that for now. What I really want to talk about is this, how is it possible that- What I really want to talk about is this, how is it possible that more lenient standards will result in better education? Now, I could well be wrong with that. I appreciate the clarification from Dr. Horton, but that's what I thought I saw and heard, was that math and English courses being eliminated, and then that was going to be an improvement in some fashion. It sounds like we're just saying that they still have to take all those classes, they're just out of sequence. I don't know exactly how that would work, but that's a much better news, in my opinion. A little story from my own experience from over ten years ago. It is possible to be exposed to rigorous academic experience in public school if the student and her parents or, and/or parents are paying close attention and ensure that the proper courses are taken. My youngest son, for example, heading into his senior year, he decided he would go on a cruise control and take all easy classes to allow more time for fun. That did not mesh with his college plans and requirements, and when I got wind of it, there were some adjustments. To add more pressure, he had to make all A's in senior year in order to recover his GPA enough to qualify for a HOPE scholarship. Amazingly, he almost pulled it off. He had an eighty-nine in one English class, A's in all the others. Missing out on the HOPE money was frustrating, painful, but had he not had that pressure on him to perform over his senior year, he would have struggled in college even more than he did. Imagine those students whose parents are not paying as close attention as we did, or sadly just don't care as much. Allowing an easy street high school experience is not doing any child any favors. There's a saying that's popular these days, that history is borne out, which goes something like this. Hard times create strong men. Strong men create good times. Good times create weak men, and weak men create hard times. It's a repeating cycle over time. The ability to take something other than the path of least resistance is very valuable. Sometimes hard times, as in rigorous academic requirements, are necessary to create strong people, as in adequately educated students. If we don't have this, we're going to go backwards as a society. We can already see it happening in the unraveling of our complex energy and transportation systems. Capable people willing to do hard work are necessary to maintain it. AI and the robots are not going to be able to do the job alone. Let's not contribute to this problem by lowering academic standards. And hopefully, what I've heard tonight tells me that you actually have not. Thank you.
Thank you all for being in attendance this evening, both online and in person. Also, thank the members of the public who signed up to speak. There will not be any public comment responses from the Board this evening. Moving on to Board comments. Are there any comments from the Board?
I do have a few comments to make. First of all, I'm so excited for you, Haley, to have you at that state level again. I'm so excited. I know you're going to do great things. And I just want to say, to the start of school, the start of school ended up with no power at East Calhwyda High School. I'm reminding Dr. Horton, he already knows. We had no power at Lee Middle and Willis Road, those are in my district. We had down trees, eighty mile an hour winds, significant damages on our side of the county, and our teachers are still hanging in. My daughter's a seventh grade teacher, and she is doing what she needs to do. I had some of your bus drivers this morning, Dr. Simmons, calling me about 5:15, because, you know, they know I'm probably going to know, and I did. I did know. Dr. Horton had already reached out to us that we were rolling and what schools were closed. So amongst all of the things and the wheels that turn in this community to get students to school, and you battle weather and other things like that, we are still doing what's right by kids, and I want to thank you guys for that. Thank our bus drivers, our custodians. I'm excited. I might make a phone call to a few of them to let them know about that much-needed break for them in money. For Dr. Barker, thank you for those numbers. It's great. It's great to hear from you, Dr. Andrew. It's great for you guys to be participating in our Board. Welcome to Central Office, and thank you guys for a great week to a great new year.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick comment. Along with the start of school comes the start of high school sports. And of course, everyone most likely knows high school football will get started really soon, on August the nineteenth. All three of our high schools will be at Drake Stadium, taking on three Fayette County schools. You can get, I guess, three high school football games for the price of one, if you want to stay there all day. Certainly get out and support these, but it's not just football. Softball is getting started. I think volleyball is getting started. There's going to be marching band competitions over the fall, and I'm sure I'm leaving some others out. But what's that? Cross country, yes, every Saturday morning. You can go see a ton of kids running somewhere. But get out and support. Get out and support these student athletes. You know, they put a lot into it. They're practicing the best they can, and it's whether we've had the past few days. I've probably canceled a few games already. But I just want to urge the public in general to get out and support them, have fun. It's, if you love sports, it's probably the cheapest admission you can find anywhere. It's great competition, and not just great competition, I know it's the best sportsmanship that you'll ever see on a field anywhere. So thank you for all the coaches that put their time and blood, sweat, and tears into it every day and all the kids that participate. So looking forward to it myself.
Thank you, Mr. Glover and Mrs. Dees. Are there any other Board comments?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to say something about the naming of the athletic training facility at Newnan High for Harry Mullins and Radar, James Radar Brantley. If you go to a Newnan High School football game on Friday nights, you're going to see both of those individuals there. And most likely, you're going to see at least one, if not two of them, on the sidelines. So these guys, they, Harry Mullins came from Mississippi and served as athletic trainer at Newnan for several years, served on this board for several years, a great guy. Radar came from, I believe it was somewhere down between Macon and Savannah, down there. Came here, but he's been around forever, and those guys are still involved in athletics at Newnan High School. And like I said, you can't go to a Newnan High School game without seeing one and possibly both of those. So I think that's an honor, well-deserved, and maybe a little overdue, but nevertheless, we've got new facilities now, so when people come to the games to see the new athletic facilities, they'll see their names up there. So I just want to congratulate them. Also, I want to give a shout out to our transportation people. I was down at East Calhwyda Middle School, the first day of school, watching kids get off the bus and welcoming them back. And as always, I say usually there's two or three buses that are a little bit late getting in, and we hang around till they get in. This year, they were all there on time. And we get emails about and text messages about everybody's home safe, and that's our goal, to get them from home to school safely and then get them from school back home safely. So they may be a little bit late sometimes, but this wasn't the case the first week or so. So our goal is to get them where they need to be safely. So a big shout out to Mr. Simmons there. And then to Ronny Cheek and all the construction people, I know anytime you start digging around in the ground, you don't know what you're going to find, especially when you're dealing with some older construction like they found at Newnan High School. We've had some change requests there, so I appreciate what those guys are doing. We spent some time out there last week walking around, and it's really going to be a nice facility when it's said and done. So thank you, Earl, for what you guys do.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. High praise from the voice of the Indians, I'll say. Any other Board comments this evening? All right. Is there a motion to approve to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.